Thank you.
Okay. No one else has any questions? Then I think we're ready to move on to the next topic. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for presenting. So, now, we're going to move to action items. And I don't know that this one has any action, but J-2A legislation update. And I'll call on Mrs. Fay to introduce our speakers.
I think Mr. Lindsay and Rochelle are here tonight. Ms. Snell are here tonight to give us some. And you got a report. There were a couple of questions that came to me prior to the meeting. And this is a different report. It got off.
This is prettier.
I know. I opened it up and went, "What is that? It's all colorful and stuff." Did you do that? No, you didn't.
Add the color to it?
No, you didn't do that. I know you didn't.
That's way beyond my understanding of technology.
I know. I know that. So, there were a couple of questions, and so I know that Mr. Lindsay will highlight those. One having to do with virtual schools and the other one having to do with the implementation of the ACT. So, we went and we did go over the anticipated fiscal impact of LB-1067 with Ms. Kenoke last or two weeks ago. So, we do have a little bit of background on that, so.
Just go through from your materials. You see, we're just going to do a recap of the legislative session. Be happy to answer any questions at any time as we go through it. First, in the learning community, there were a series of bills that were introduced that ranged from different approaches for how to change the learning community. The bill, of course, that the Education Committee and ultimately the Legislature adopted was LB-1067. 1067, I won't focus on the financial aspects because you've already heard that, I believe, from Ms. Kenoke. But it does, 1067 does eliminate the common levy. It creates a requirement for community achievement plans. I think Ms. Kenoke talked about the adjustment, the community achievement plan adjustment. But there are requirements in there that the learning community develop community achievement plans which would work, which would require cooperation between the various districts within the learning community. The bill also eliminates open enrollment and replaces it with option enrollment. There's a period of time where they're referred to as, I think it's called, option open enrollment, which is a combination of the two until those open enrollees finish their terms. It eliminates the requirement to provide transportation to open enrollment students or as they become open option students. It allows districts to provide transportation to option students. It does provide the requirement that kids need, the transportation requirement would continue until those, until the open enrollment kids finish at the building which they are currently attending. So, when they finish at that building and move to the, what the next building would be, transportation is no longer required. And then finally, it provides transition aid to several of the learning community districts, not including OPS. Some of the other things, it also, I didn't get it up here on the slide, but it does remove the school board members from the learning community coordinating council and reduces the size of the council from 18 to 12. The next grouping of bills are those that dealt with TOSA, the state aid formula. And that is really tiny writing. I'm glad I have notes here because I'd never be able to see that. The first is providing foundation aid. There was a lot of discussion this year dealing with the, because of the ag land valuations, a lot of discussion about property tax and how to reduce the burden in rural areas. One of those was foundation aid, which was actually prioritized by Senator Shear. It would have started with, I think, $1,500 and gotten up to $3,000 per student with an adjustment to TOSA to account for that. It would have also required that whatever dollars were received in that form of the foundation aid would have required a dollar-for-dollar reduction in the district's property tax levy. So, it would have had OPS and other districts really scrambling to try to cover those holes. That was killed in committee. LB-959 was the governor's property tax bill. As was originally introduced, it would have had limitations on spending growth regardless of enrollment growth. One of the problems we have is that OPS adds quite a few kids each year, and those kids often are either in poverty or English language learners. This would have limited the spending regardless of those extenuating circumstances that OPS has to, with which OPS has to deal. It would have limited unused budget authority, would have limited cash reserves held by districts, and right now, there's a portion of the retirement costs that are excluded from the levy limitation. It would have repealed that purpose. As passed, it is not, doesn't really impact OPS too badly. It does expand the averaging adjustment to some smaller schools at a cost of less than, I think, about $400,000 statewide. It eliminates the minimum levy adjustment at a cost statewide of about $8.5 million. Neither of those help OPS nor do they hurt OPS. It does place limits on qualified special purpose undertaking bonds, which basically limits how much a district can have in those bonds. OPS is not near either the prior limit or the current, the limit under the new law. So, it shouldn't have a big impact on OPS. LB-1063, similar to the last foundation aid, it would have taken a percentage of the income tax, multiplied it by, within each district, multiplied it per student, and distributed that as foundation aid to the various districts without accounting for, regardless of what the district's resources were. That bill stayed in committee, was never advanced. LB-826 would have, also did not advance. It would have required the state to appropriate at least 80% of special education costs. Would have been a significant increase, which would have been very beneficial to OPS. The fiscal note on the bill doomed it because the costs, because it represented a much higher increase, or a much higher level of funding for special education. LB-1066 was the department cleanup bill. That bill did pass. At one point, it included a committee amendment, which would have required a resident, a district of residence of an option student to reimburse the option district for any excess special education costs, although it was difficult to estimate the estimated somewhere between, it could have cost somewhere between $4 and $10 million. The amendment was defeated on the floor. The bill passed, but without that provision in it. LB-882 would have put limits on school district budget growth, including prohibiting carryover of unused spending authority, which is significant to OPS. Actually, would have returned OPS to some of the extreme difficulties it faced back in '01, '02, '03 that actually led to the litigation OPS engaged in at that point. Moving on to the property tax arena. LB-995, and again, I mentioned that there was a lot of emphasis on doing something about rural, doing something about the rural tax load driven by ag land valuation increases. 995 would have valued agricultural land instead of at market value, would have valued it at its agricultural value. Not real clear on what that means, but it would have an attempt to probably shift it to an income sort of valuation as opposed to a market valuation. The Tax Stabilization Act, LB-940, would have frozen values, property values at the January 1, 2016 numbers, would have frozen them there till 2021. If the Legislature did not take action to reform property tax, then it would have allowed growth only, limited to the amount of the growth in the state budget. And that bill did not get out of committee. LB-1013 is a cigarette tax increase with a big portion of it intended for property tax relief. At one point, there was discussion about $10 million of the cigarette tax increase being earmarked for funding poverty grants. But the bill couldn't get five votes. That was, there were different approaches being taken to try to secure five votes. The funding of poverty education was one of them, but they still couldn't get to the five votes to get it out of committee, so that bill did die. LB-958 was the governor's property tax bill over on the Revenue Committee side. It had some problematic issues. It would have restricted, would have limited school districts' use of restricted funds, would have removed certain exclusions from the levy limit, which could have been significant. Main thing is it would have limited increases in agricultural land value to 3% each year, which would have had a dramatic impact on shifting dollars from larger urban districts to smaller rural districts. The committee amendments removed all of those provisions, replaced them with a $224 million increase in property tax credit fund, which would be driven to, excuse me, not 224 million, the fund is at that approximate level, would have been a $20 million increase, about a 10% increase in that. All of that increase going to agricultural, going to ag land. And then LB-1037 is agricultural land expansion. It was a priority bill, defeated at, I believe, Select File. It would have expanded the agricultural land valuation at 65% to include the home and the land and buildings around the home that are currently excluded from that valuation. The TIF legislation, there were a couple of bills dealing with TIF. One would require the County Board of Equalization to approve TIF. The second was a constitutional amendment to authorize a taxing body, which would include school districts, to be excluded from TIF projects. Both of those were defeated, but as we'll talk a little bit later, I think TIF's going to be an issue that will be addressed in the next session. Other significant legislation includes LB-447. I understand that there was a Meg, Ms. Neelis Brash and Mr. Kramer gave a presentation on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but of course, the major thrust of that is that it transferred the investment authority for OSER's assets to the State Investment Officer. LB-1004 and 1065 were both bills that attempted to implement the community eligibility provision. That provision, which was kind of a merged provision from those two bills, was adopted as part of the Education Department Cleanup Bill, LB-1066, so that will go into effect. LB-874, filling vacancies on school boards. Basically, they took what currently applies to OPIA, to Class 5 District, and applied it to all other districts, and that is that when appointing a vacancy on a school board, it goes for the unexpired term as opposed to other districts now have until the next primary, or if it's after the primary, until the next general election. LB-930 would replace the junior NISA test with a college admission test. One of the questions was, what's the timeline for that? That will take effect in the 17, 18 school year. The 16, 17 school year will continue as it currently is. The following year, they will, they'll move to the college admission testing. And the State Board will select from a nationally recognized college admission testing to see which of the tests would be applied. LB-1086 expands the self-management of asthma or anaphylaxis. Right now, a student, a student must be authorized by a physician to self-administer. This would expand that to other health providers, so it can include a nurse practitioner or a physician assistant or other authorized individuals, healthcare providers. LB-1049 was OPS-sponsored legislation to authorize virtual schools or to provide funding for virtual schools. The bill did not get out of committee. We were hoping to get it included into the cleanup bill. Committee was not interested in advancing the bill. Interim studies. Interim studies are legislative resolutions that can be proposed by any senator. They go to the committees then. The committee chair would decide which of those interim studies would have, would have a hearing and to what extent the issue would be studied. And there's a variety of them. It does give you an indicator of what various senators are thinking as far as future legislation. So, very quickly, 439 is, will be in Urban Affairs Committee, and I believe it's going to get some attention in Urban Affairs. That's going to study TIF, at least with respect to residential development. 483 will look at the Public Employee Retirement Board, while not directly related to OPS. When they make changes, they typically will flow back down to OSER's. 512 will look at the Commission of Industrial Relations to see if there would be reform there. 533, career training. 559, civic education initiative. LR564 is kind of vague, examining education in Nebraska. What it's referring to is to post-secondary education, looking at what can be done in the area of primarily adults in post-secondary education. Probably will not include much in the area of K-12. 565's examining land acquisition. This is basically an issue that involves Southeast Community College down in Lincoln, proposed by a Lincoln senator, and they'll be examining issues surrounding that. 571 would be dealing with local political subdivision retirement plans, not really, OSER's is not really a target of that. There's some other political subdivisions, I think, that they want to look at. 581 wants to review whether the state in Nebraska should continue to receive federal funds for education and what the impact would be if Nebraska did not accept those funds. 586 could be significant. It would examine, I'm sorry. It would examine the, whether to continue health insurance in the current system or whether employees of school districts should become part of the state health insurance plan. That will be, it will be one of the priorities of the Education Committee, so I think it will receive a hearing. 587 is the general jurisdictional thing. That's basically a study where any issue that pops up could be included and studied in it. 593 is a general study of real estate taxes. 597 seeks to address a specific use of bonding or other future obligations without a direct vote of the taxpayers. 600's going to continue looking at ways of looking at, of valuing agricultural land. And then finally, that last study is 604, which would look at inconsistencies in assessing real estate between counties. Other issues that we expect to come up, a continuation of the discussion from, that was part of the whole learning community discussion on statewide poverty, especially statewide poverty with respect to high levels of poverty within districts. And then there will be, there are already some informal discussions regarding significant changes to TOSA, and those very likely would evolve into some formal discussions. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Are we all legislative session?
I would, this is.
Sorry.
I would just say that the Legislative Committee is going to meet probably this summer, early this summer, I think is what we talked about. So, if there's something that you, particularly in the expected issues or the interim studies or something else that's on your mind that you want us to take up, then shoot an email to Mr. Ray.
Oh, Ms. America and then Mr. Wayne.
Just kind of expand on what Mrs. Fay said. I think she sent everyone on the board an email reminding us that in July, the NASB Legislative Committee will be meeting, and if our board wants to recommend anything to the State Board Association to be included in their statewide positions or their statewide legislative resolution, that's something that we have to submit to them by July 1st. So, that is something I'd encourage you, if you think of anything, get that to Mr. Ray so that the Legislative Committee can discuss it and bring it to our second meeting in June. For example, last year as a board, we brought them a resolution for community eligibility provision, asking for there to be statewide support for making changes that could be implemented smoother, and they did that, and we got legislation passed, and that was an amazing thing. Or if you have ideas for legislation in general of things you think could help make education in Nebraska better, the interim is when the real work on that gets done and the drafting and going back and forth, generally, if we do this, what's the effect if we do this? That's what happens from now until next January. So, this is really the next few months of time to start thinking about that and coming up with ideas that we'd like to pass along to our fair senators in Lincoln.
Thanks, Lacey. Mr. Wayne.
I guess this is more for superintendent staff. I know that the virtual school obviously didn't go through. So, what's the next steps on that? And I guess the reason why I'm asking is, those are one of the issues, if I recall, that everybody on the board thought it was a good idea. And so, I just, I don't know what the next steps are, so I just wanted to ask.
Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Gadding. We are continuing forward. We're working with NDE. What the legislative work would have done was really solidify the long-term funding of it. We believe it's there. We've had confirmation from the staff at NDE. Ms. Kenoke, myself, Mr. Dixon have been in conversation. So, we're still moving forward. In fact, we still intend to have an RFP for some online curriculum in the near future that would come to this board. We believe we're still going to be able to capture enrollment to pay for it, and that's the big issue. It has to have new enrollment to create the payment of it. We have to have membership growth, and the state has to allow us to count that membership growth. And so, that's what we're in the midst of doing. We're still planning to move forward, and to me, what the legislative piece would have done is stop some of the challenges we have with CEP. Where CEP, it looked like everything was done, and then when we go to work with Department of Education, then it didn't get qualified for all the reimbursement funding that we believe we were receiving. Now, I think we've squared away CEP, but it took some time to get there. And I think that's what we were looking for, is to get there ahead of the curve. But we're still moving forward. We believe it can be done. We want to go ahead and put our foot in that water and see, make sure the state does do what we believe they'll do, and then continue to expand over time. But we really need to just open the door first. Hire staff, train staff, support staff, all pieces that we'll bring back to the board. I know we've given the board broad overviews. We need to give you some more detailed pieces of how that support's provided and supported, but that will still come to you. So, it's still on the burner with, inclusive of, an RFP.
Mrs. Fay.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question, Justin. Thank you. And earlier today, Mrs. Gadding had asked about, you know, how that had panned out in that cleanup bill. So, I guess I would like, you know, sooner rather than later, not a lengthy presentation, not starting at the beginning, but just how you plan to pay for it, because it seems to me that one of the issues that came up when we were talking about virtual schools was the grades you were going to start it at, and if the funding is required, if the funding is dependent on capturing new students, I think maybe you should revisit the idea of starting it at secondary instead of elementary, because I feel like you'd capture more new students that way. But that can be for your next presentation on virtual schools.
And we have talked about it, getting it back to the board, so it'll be, it'll come within the next, I hope, six to eight weeks, right? Is that what we talked about? Okay.
One of the reasons why I bring it up is my neighbor, they have homeschool, but I went to their graduate, they had a graduation, but they actually go to a building once a week, and we just kind of had a conversation about it, so I still think it's relevant. They actually go to a building once a week and then do everything else online at home. I just think it'd be an option for us if we can figure out the funding piece.
Okay. Any other questions on the legislative piece? Those are all good. All right. With that, we're going to move on. There's no action from any of those items, so we're going to move on to J-2B, Omaha Public Schools Legal Services, and I think that's Mrs. Meg Neelis Brash.
President Gadding, Vice President Williams, members of the Board of Education of Omaha Public Schools, and Superintendent Evans. I'm here tonight to present to you my recommendation for the provisions of our legal services within the district. I'm going to start off, I'm going to provide some background, actually probably before I even got here to the district, kind of walk you through where we've been the last two and a half years since I've been employed as your in-house counsel, and then I'm going to give you some recommendations based on all the feedback that I've received from all of you. So, let's start before I even got as part of, here as part of the district. I read many Omaha World Herald articles about your legal services, and I also read that the Board of Education was looking at voting to hire in-house counsel to save the district money. And so, all of you voted previously to have that in-house counsel position as part of the district. I began working with the district in October of 2013, and I've come to know your legal services very well through that process. I was hired, in part, to give you that advice and counsel, to be that person for all of you that is independent from our outside counsel and makes my own internal recommendation to all of you regarding what I believe is in the best interest of the school district. And so, I've presented several years in a row with regard to our legal fees and our legal services. And the last time I presented was previous to this, was in September 15th of, regarding legal services. And I reviewed what was last year's legal services bill, walked through the totals there, and the retainer saved the district $16,711 last year. This also, if you took out the bond issue fees with regard to district, we were down So, if you walk back to last year, if you include the FTE that I am or what I cost the district, because previously my position was part as the chief negotiator for Omaha Public Schools, that chief negotiator was someone that you employed previously that was not in-house counsel. So, that FTE was repurposed. If you include that as well as the additional savings to the district, we have saved the district $380,000 last year alone. The year previous to that, we saved the district $325,000 by hiring in-house counsel. So, your decision, well before I was hired- So your decision, well before I was hired, has saved the district money. And that has been proven through the results of all of our legal bills as part of the district. So we've spent OPS, we spend approximately 1/4 of 1% of our total budget. So really, we're talking about very few dollars here that impact what we do on a day-to-day On that September date, I presented several recommendations to the board for their consideration. I said that we should maintain outside counsel relationship for most matters because we're provided high-quality and effective and efficient legal services. When I looked back at the September presentation, you will recall, I did mention that I looked at, you know, our school law issues and what kind of school law attorneys are out there in Omaha, Lincoln and all across Nebraska. And there's really only three firms that primarily do most of the education work within the state. One firm is located here in Omaha, Barrett Home, and the other two firms are located in Lincoln. We need a large law firm to provide legal services as part of the district because you want to have someone that understands the multiple areas that affect the school district. We have 9,000 employees. We have many employment law issues. We have ERISA. We have a retirement system. We have to have an attorney that understands retirement law. We need to have access to multiple areas of specialty that we have in a large law firm that can provide us that service. We also need to have access to a lawyer that provides a school law information, that understands FERPA, that understands different issues that schools face that are unique to a school district. And so we need to have someone that's experienced and knowledgeable and that I can call and provide me just off-the-cuff initial legal recommendations where they know and have experienced things in the past. And so as you recall, I had recommended that we stay with Barrett Home at that time. I'd also recommended that we take two of our areas out for RFQ and that would have been in December for workers' comp and immigration. We had exchanged extensive discussions regarding whether or not an additional attorney should be hired. And at that discussion in September, I was directed to go out and obtain a contract. So we had something in writing with Barrett Home. I've gone out. I have done that process and I've worked through that and I'll talk about that later in my recommendation for all of you, as I was directed to do that on behalf of the Board of Education. I met with Mr. Evans. I met with eight of the nine Board of Education members throughout that time period before I came back for my recommendation to you in January. I based my recommendations on the feedback and the discussions that I had with all of you and I tried to provide you the best quality legal services, understand the issues that you might have with the contract or other recommendations that I might have with regard to that process. And so I've brought back these recommendations to you. These are three recommendations that I have this evening and I will address each one by one. The first is the three-year agreement with Barrett Home to serve as the district's primary outside counsel. I think that this is important because we have a firm agreement in writing. You will notice that the district's retainer amount has gone up. To maybe the initial glance, you think, oh, my gosh, the fees are increasing, it's doubling, but that is in fact not true. Basically, what we're doing is we're taking many things that were hourly basis and we're making them a fixed fee. What is a fixed fee, you ask? You're basically taking an amount of money and setting aside that amount of money and saying, we're going to spend X on all of these things. We've also included more things into that retainer. What are some of those items? Well, we have day-to-day employment issues. We've got 9,000 employees, as I mentioned earlier, and so we have a very regular and robust employment law section where we need regular answers on a variety of different issues multiple times every single day. We also have training as part of the new retainer. Most recently, we trained all of the principals on Title IX. That training under the new retainer would be included as part of that fixed fee or that capped amount of money rather than being provided on an hourly basis to the district. In addition to the training, as well as to the day-to-day employment issues, you will also see other provisions that were regularly under the agreement as well as other different and new provisions. And so I really feel that this provides the district savings. If you look at what we did last year and if we would have had this retainer in place, you would have seen a savings of $38,000 in addition to the savings that you already received because we had the previous retainer in place. So really, what this three-year contract does is provides you a sound agreement that sets forth what's in the retainer and what is not, and it provides you a savings as part of the district. So what I'm trying to recommend to you this evening is something that's not going to toss the district as much money. I think this is important because we need to be spending that money in the classrooms, not on legal fees. And so for the amount of, and while I can't control all of the legal fees with regard to the district, we get sued. And it happens on a regular basis and so that's something that I cannot control. But there's about a little less than 50% of our budget that is something that we call on a day-to-day basis. And previous to this, when I came in-house, our district kind of had this habit of sort of calling legal counsel whenever we wanted to. And, you know, there was nobody saying, should we call legal counsel on that? Is that actually a legal issue? And so now, as part of Policy 2330, you have everyone ask either the superintendent or myself with regard to whether or not we can use legal counsel. And I think that's a really good practice in place because it helps make a decision as to whether or not I can provide, A, the answer if it is in fact a legal question or it may not be a legal question and so they don't need to call the outside counsel. And so it provides that sort of basis and that determination to save those costs as well. I think that this agreement also provides an opportunity to have everything clearly set forth as you had previously requested and has all of the normal terms and provisions that we would expect of anybody that we would contract with the district. You will see your E-Verify provision in there. You will see the nondiscrimination provision in the agreement. And so I think it provides a savings for the district and is with a very competent legal counsel. My second recommendation is an authorization to prepare requests for qualifications and pricing or an RFP for legal services relating to workers' comp. Specifically, the reason why I think workers' comp is different than the rest of your legal services is because it doesn't require that specialized knowledge of the district, nor does it require that specialized knowledge of school law. And so I think that you can have multiple firms out there that could provide you qualifications that would be something very, that we could see additional savings with. And so I do, would be also requesting from you this evening that we would take that area out for bid. Likely, it's going to take me, depending on my recommendation of number three and who we would get with regard to legal counsel services, it may take three or four months before we actually got that bid out and back because I would probably want that additional in-house attorney evaluating these RFQs with me if you would go around that route. And I could do it probably within two months if the third recommendation is not approved this evening. So the workers' comp area, also, I think that we can provide some unique ways of looking at it. Right now, it's an hourly basis. We could look at doing something that was more flat fee for anything that's not litigation so that we can call all the time. You know, currently, we have our third-party administrator looking at the cases. Often, those cases have attorneys on them and they're making decisions regarding each particular case and the amount of our payout, you know, without necessarily accessing legal counsel. And so if we had the availability of having sort of a flat fee for legal counsel, we'd have more opportunity for services and maybe not some precedent that we may or may not want to set in that situation. And so I do think that taking this out, looking at it a different way would provide us options. And I think it's unique because it doesn't have that school law area that it touches. My third and final recommendation this evening is to hire an additional in-house attorney. I think that this is important, just like so long ago before I got here, you found it was important to hire me. And you've seen those savings and I think that this is an investment for your future. While I do realize that this will be an FTE, that is a new FTE as part of the district and it will cost you some dollars initially, I have reduced with anticipation that you will save some dollars. I have reduced the legal budget that I turn in every year to Mrs. Kenoke. And I believe while just a small increase, $80,000 to my total budget, I think that you guys could have appropriate, efficient in-house counsel. I think there are two areas that I see that an in-house counsel could serve the district well in. I think one area would be in the labor and employment section. We have so many issues with regard to EOC claims. That person could provide advice and counsel with regard to teacher terminations and really perform even more than the day-to-day functions in that role. We also have special education, providing an in-house counsel and access to special education that they may be aware of. We need someone that understands OCR on a regular basis. We also have many other issues with regard to the district and the employment area that we could provide help and counsel, perhaps with regard to some of our labor unions. It would, you know, provide some flexibility there having that employment and labor attorney. The other area that I see great need inside the district that we could save so many additional dollars is in what I would consider the business services arena. That would include any RFQs that the district sent out that are currently being reviewed by legal counsel. We could bring that in-house and not have to expend those outside legal dollars. We also have lots of property acquisition. We have lots of contracting with regard to many large bids and after you go through that RFQ process, you might need to create a contract for that. We have many needs with regard to our insurance and making sure that we've got someone looking at all the claims on a regular basis that we have out there and having regular conversations with our third-party administrator. And so I think that there are so many areas out there and depending on who we got that was qualified and applied for that particular provision, you could fill either one of those areas and keep an in-house counsel busy all the time. And depending on how experienced they are, if the more experienced they are, the quicker that you would see savings. The less experienced they are, the longer it probably would take to realize those savings. I would put out and caution the board, I'm not saying that you're going to make any savings initially in the sense that you're going to see immediate reduction of your legal fees. I do would suggest to all of you that you will, it's a long-term investment, in somewhere between two and five years, depending how experienced that individual stays, you will see that they make up their own FTE and over time, I think you'll see additional savings. And so it's a long-term investment that I'm asking the board to make this evening with regard to number three. But I do think that really the recommendations that I have in front of you this evening are to put the dollars back in the classroom and away from legal services and back to doing what you need to use those dollars for on a regular basis, but yet provide us competent, professional outside experience as well as provide additional resources in-house. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. This would probably be directed towards Ms. Kenoke. This past, was it last week or the week before? This is my first ever budget meeting. And the way that meeting seemed to me is that we potentially could have a $7 million shortfall. How does this fit into that?
Well, what we're looking at right now is moving some positions over from the general fund and using federal funds to free up some of the general fund money. And then we're also with the change in valuation, since we're still part of the learning community, there's a, all of Millard had an increase in their valuation, depending on what happens with the county, what they're going to do. There is an opportunity that we could maybe get a little bit more in property taxes than we were estimating before.
So jury's still out on where we'll fit in?
Yeah, it's still out and we're still looking at all the options that we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Wayne.
When we say we're looking at options, this is the first time I hear of a $7 million figure that we might be short. I mean, I look at Westside and Millard are having meetings and we're talking about doubling legal counsel before we deal with any type of shortfall. I have some big concerns there. That just kind of threw me off. So we can't make a determination at this point of whether we're going to cut any staff or anything right now.
That number was very preliminary and it was also, the $7 million was additional items that Mrs. Kenoke brought to us for consideration once we get the revenue numbers. But we are so far from having accurate revenue numbers, I think. Is that correct? And that's what you shared with us.
Yeah, we'll know more in the end of May. We're hoping by next week, the end of next week, we'll know more on what our base budget is before we add in all of the increases that we know are coming, like for transportation, for the student assignment plan. There's an estimated increase of $3 million for that. And the PeopleSoft upgrade may be an additional expense, virtual schools, those type of things. So we'll have to be making decisions on which way you want to go and how to proceed. Another thing we're looking at is, you know, examining our programs, what we're doing and the direction we're going, rather than expanding what we have, making sure that we're going the way the board would like us to go and that it follows our strategic plan as we review those things, too.
I guess from my position right now, just listening to that, I mean, before we double a department inside the Tac Building, we need to make sure that our schools and our programs are taken care of before we have this conversation. I think it does not look good to, and that was what we will be doing, I know it's only one person, but at the end of the day, we will be increasing legal fees that long-term we may say over, but short-term, we could be facing a budget crisis that we just, I'm just now hearing about for the first time. That concerns me from a perception standpoint and from the morale of our staff and paras and people who are out here that we're going to add staff in Tac before we figure out what we're going to do across the whole district from a budget perspective. I'll end with that.
Ms. Merrick.
I just wanted to point out, because I know members of our board have asked, you know, why is Westside cutting their budget? Why is Millard cutting their budget? And we've all been provided with that information, that those districts are in a very different situation than we're in, where Westside has been through multiple rounds of budget cutting the past many years. You hear every year about them having to make some type of cut and people going to their meetings to fight against the cuts. That has been going on for years. Millard is in a situation where they used to receive additional state aid based on their higher level of teacher education and their extended, the extended amount of time that they had students in school. They don't receive that anymore, so they're receiving less funding because of those two things and that's why they're having to redo their budgets and make budget cuts. It's not the same situation that we're in. And I don't, I think we're creating our own crisis if we say, oh, my God, we have a budget crisis right now, because as Ms. Kenoke said, we don't have our final numbers yet. We should not be labeling, oh, my God, we have a budget crisis, when we don't have our final numbers to know if we have one or not. That's just stirring up unnecessary stress that people in our district don't need.
May I respond? I'm just responding to the conversation here where we just, we said a possible $2 million increase for student transportation.
Which we discussed during the student assignment plan discussion.
No, we talked about a slight increase and there could be one.
No, the research department brought us numbers.
That there could be one and now these numbers are here. And I'm saying, are we budgeting for all of that? We gave teachers over for last year, one of the most, I think, since I've been on the board, significant raises. We just talked about PeopleSoft, which for the last four years, I've been pushing for a PeopleSoft upgrade. I know that's $12 million, if not more, because that's what I used to use at my former employer. So, but that isn't, the point isn't how many. The point is, do we double a department inside the Tac without knowing our finances? Have our finances in order?
And Mr. Wayne, I'm not addressing- And, Mr. Wayne, I'm not addressing that question. Even, I'm just saying, I think it is very improper of us as a board to publicly say we have a budget crisis and shouldn't be discussing this type of thing when we have no final numbers saying that.
Mr. Stone.
Okay. If I'm correct, and, I mean, this, I think this is all related. So in 2015, 2016, we did cut discretionary funding to schools, correct? And we moved positions from the general fund into Title I, and they lost that funding there. So in a way, we still, from the school level, they did lose funding. Thank you.
Ms. Underwood.
Sorry, you probably mentioned this, but what is the current retainer amount?
$11,500.
So even though we are increasing that quite a bit, we're also increasing the scope that's included under the retainer.
Correct.
And then the, if, one of the points of your conversation about hiring another attorney was that we would continue to see additional savings over time, just like we did when you were hired and we brought some of those legal services in-house. So the Barrett-Holme agreement is written for three years, correct?
Correct.
So I'm just curious if, depending on, you know, if this were all to move forward, and depending on the type of person that we get, what if some of those, some of the scope items under the retained services, this person starts doing? And do we have the ability to adjust the agreement, just to make sure we're not overlapping? And if they can start doing some of those items that Barrett-Holme is performing, can we adjust that?
That's a great question, Ms. Underwood. I actually anticipated that because of the previous discussion, the recommendation from the board to have an agreement, to have in-house counsel, I contemplated that in the negotiation price with regard to our services. If you'll look at our, what our general fund expenditure normally is for just the portion that I would say is the portion I can control, we spend about $50,000 on that portion on average every month. Some months are less, some months are closer to 60,000 or 65,000, it fluctuates a little bit. So what we put underneath the retainer contemplates the things that we would, I or another in-house counsel would need outside counsel for. And so for the most part, you know, we're not including sort of those EEOC claims, which would be outside of the agreement. If we had someone in employment, they would be able to do that. So actually, the agreement already in front of you contemplates that. If we would need to adjust it, I'm sure Barrett-Holme, at every conversation that I've ever had with them with regard to the retainer, they've always put things under the retainer. If I have any question with regard to where it should go, and I'm sure that we could have a conversation with them at any time, just as a side note with regard to the three-year agreement, the, as a client, you can say, we believe that they're no longer providing the services that we deem are appropriate for us, and we can terminate that agreement at any time, and it would be the pleasure of the board to do so.
Mr. Stone.
I'm sorry, I just thought of another question. So as in-house counsel, you report to the superintendent and the board?
Correct.
But your direct supervisor is the superintendent?
Correct.
Will that be the same for this third, the second in-house counsel?
That person would report to me.
That person will report to you?
Yes, but their ethical responsibility would be to the district superintendent and Board of Education.
I, I find it, I remember I had this conversation with you before, it's very confusing as a board member when your direct supervisor, I like Mark Evans, I voted for to extend his contract, so I do like you, that he's your direct supervisor, and then you reporting to the board, that I know that there are some, the illusion that it gives as a board member of, maybe we need an in-house counsel for, that reports directly to the board. And I think we're kind of, you know, now with your position, I think we've kind of experienced that, for me. So it was like, you know, maybe we could flush this out a little bit better before we bring on somebody else. I'm not in agreement of the three-year agreement with Barrett-Holme. I do believe, send out workman's comp, because basically anybody can do it, it's the basic across the board. But that third piece with the additional in-house counsel, that kind of gets me, especially if they're reporting to you, adds another layer. I just don't know how to explain it, I'm sorry.
Ms. Fay.
So I have several problems with the contract, and I'm, you know, not a lawyer and don't speak contractees, but before I address those, I really do agree with Justin's just basic argument that, and I don't feel like his comments were creating a budget, the illusion of a budget crisis. I didn't actually get that at all. I felt more like he was responding to the questions that Mr. Snow raised and that Ms. Kenoke provided answers to regarding potential budget shortfall, potential, and that we're just, there's too many unknowns to, before we can make a decision about something like this, because the things that she named, you know, those are important things to the PeopleSoft update, the student assignment plan, which we're already committed to, which I thought you said 3 million, not, Justin said 2, but it's 3, right? PeopleSoft, which are going to have to phase in, but I'm anticipating that actually that's the kind of thing you're never actually done with. And I don't know, Justin, since you've used it, it's, I'm guessing it's a continual, like, by the time you, since we'd be phasing it in, by the time we got around, there'd probably be new updates and, you know, it's sort of one of those, we let it go too long, and then I know we had huge HR cleanup, you know, as a result, and so I know. So, you know, there's, there are priorities. I know, I'm assuming, because we did it in the past, that this summer, we'll have a workshop where we'll set priorities based on year three of the strategic plan. And, you know, perhaps this would be one of those things to consider as a priority and how it fits into the strategic plan and the long-term plan of the district. I know that we could throw the strategic plan at it and make something stick and push it into the strategic plan and make it fit, but what I'm interested in are the priorities that we set last summer, and I don't, this was not one of them. So, you know, for me, it's about sticking to that priority-based budgeting that we've committed to and bringing this up again, perhaps, potentially at that priority-setting workshop this summer, as maybe something that we want to try and work in to year three of the strategic plan, because I'm concerned about with the passage of LB 1067 and the long-term implications of that. I think we're going to be okay for the next year or two, but what about two years out? What are we, what's going to happen? I just think there's too many unknowns, and I'm not comfortable, as Justin said, doubling the size of the department at TAC when there's needs in the classroom that are still there. So, you know, I think that the issues that happened at Westside that are happening at Westside that you referenced, Ms. America, you know, that, that's one of the problems with losing the common levy and having to be more dependent on state aid, is that we have this unpredictability that we didn't have the last couple of years. And so, but, you know, I know Justin remembers, we had some of those cuts in our first couple of years here on the board before there was a common levy or the, before the common levy was working the way it should work, where we did have to, you know, use attrition to cut this, cut or lose positions. We cut paras significantly. So this is not an unheard-of thing in recent times in our district. It's not like we've never had to have these discussions. You all haven't had to have them, but we had to have them, about what you cut and what you don't. When I got to this board, we hadn't updated some of our textbooks in 10 years. And I know because, you know, Ms. Williams, Ms. Scotting, you have high school students, although actually, your kids aren't even old enough. When my son, who's 25, almost, started at Central High School, there weren't enough textbooks for him to even take one home in one of his classes, not enough textbooks. So they had to leave them at school and use them in the classroom, and people photocopied pages and stuff like that. So, you know, there, we've, we've been a little bit more flush since then, but these are not concerns that are, hey, these are not concerns that are unknown to this district. So, and then I know, just, I think, to Katie's point, I think, what I heard Megan say was that initially there would be savings, or, excuse me, in the long-term, hiring that second attorney could potentially provide savings, but that initially we wouldn't see them. So while we're in this uncertain time, it seems risky to take on that extra person when, you know, we have heard from Megan that we won't see those savings in those initial years. So you're taking on that extra person, probably not going to save money, which means you're going to, what, lose money in those first few years, and then, you know, and you're already uncertain as to how you're going to pay for some of these other things that we're committed to, an additional $3 million for the student assignment plan, which this board has all agreed is a priority and something we're committed to and is being implemented in less than a year. So, you know, the specific problems that I have with the, with the contract, you know, I could, I could pick apart here, but really aren't relevant at this point because I just on principle can't support the concept of hiring that second attorney or expanding the scope of the, of the retainer right now, the way it's written. And I definitely would support a three-year contract. I think we just go year to year, and, you know, that provides even more flexibility. So I understand that it's, you know, could be terminated at will, and I get that, but if that's the case, then why not just have a one-year contract and just renew it every year if that's the case? So I, I'm going to stop there for the moment, but those are my
Ms. Williams.
Primary issues, yeah.
Ms. Williams.
I actually just would like to hear Mr. Evans' thoughts about all of these three issues that we're discussing.
I guess first I'll start with, I do understand the concerns of 1067 and the impact two and three years down the road. We had an op-ed that ran in the World Herald that kind of discussed that two and three years down the road. So there is, there is some reality to that, for sure. I'm hopeful that it becomes a good reality, because there's some potential for a good reality, too, but I'm like everybody else, I've watched TOSA and the impact of TOSA and the changes made in Lincoln on TOSA over the last 23, 24 years, so always concerned about that. So with that in mind, the proposals we're talking about tonight with the inclusion of Barrett-Holme and the retainer increase and the reduction in the hourly piece, I think that actually is going to save us money. I think in the long term, we're going to see dollars saved on that, and I think, to me, that's easy to support. And I, I'm not sure where all the board is, and I understand you're grappling with that to some extent, but to me, that's not difficult to support. I understand the concern on the final, the number three spot, which is the addition of the staff person. I think it would be helpful for us. I certainly think we can fill, fill the person's day. I don't think there's an issue with that. But I do understand the board's hesitancy, and I do understand the concerns about the long term. And anytime I don't have concerns about the long term, Connie always reminds me, Ms. Kenoke always reminds me, to have concerns about the long term. And I think that's every school district in America. I suspect everybody has concerns. Everywhere I've been, we've always had concerns, and we've always wondered, how would we be the next year? And sometimes we've had some good years, and we've been blessed the last few years, and part of that I'll give to some good accounting work by Ms. Kenoke, who has been able to help us and support us in how we, how we do our claiming, and I think that's been helpful. Our membership keeps going up, that's been helpful. So we've had several things that have, that have helped us overcome, and Mr. Wayne's right, too, we did significantly impact teacher pay. I mean, there's no doubt about it, and I suspect it is the largest in the history of this district, is my guess. I don't think there's a, a time period when we haven't stepped up to the plate to make sure we prioritize, which is priority one, our teachers. And the school board made that decision really very purposely. So I do understand that, too, that there's some implications for that. So I understand the struggle with the last one. The first two I don't have any struggle with, and I hope the board does, doesn't as well. The third one I think is a conversation point for the board to have. I'm still recommending it, but I understand the angst that it creates, too.
You know, when I, when I look at these, I think, I think the three-year agreement is pretty easy. You said 38, $40,000 a year savings. I mean, I think, I, you know, I never want to walk away from savings, and I see that opportunity there. The work comp, clearly I've done a little bit of dealing with work comp issues in my past, and I think that there's an opportunity for savings there. There's also some opportunity to get a little more creative in how we manage work comp, and, and I think that this gives us that opportunity. I guess on the third piece, when I look at the savings, when you came on board, we really weren't sure we were going to see any savings. And you just mentioned that in year one, it was over $300,000, and year two, it was over $300,000. When I look at some of the things that you mentioned, that we're currently outsourcing, that could be done internally, and I think about some of the employment things, and I think specifically about a lot of the contract work and the bond work, to me, I see savings for that, and I guess I never want to live in fear of the unknown. I want to be responsible and respectful for what the unknown is. But when you outline the opportunity that's been given to us to potentially hire another person, and we think about two and a half years ago when you came on board and we weren't sure we were going to see savings, but we took the bold step of bringing in in-house legal counsel. When we look at other districts that are comparable in size to us, they have far more in-house legal counsel than what we have. I mean, we're almost comparable in-house legal counsel-wise to what Westside has, and look at how much larger we are than Westside. So for me, it's about being responsible with the resources we have and using those effectively. I think we would see savings, and I don't know that it would take that long to do that savings. If you hire somebody who has contract experience, they're going to be able to sit down and start looking at RFQs and RFPs and land purchase contracts and construction contracts and not be challenged by that if they have that experience. If it's someone who has EEOC or employment experience, they're going to be able to sit down and effectively evaluate what needs to happen. So for me, living in fear of what we don't know, which we clearly don't know, but being responsible to do the work that we need to do, and I think we clearly know that Ms. Megan Neelis-Brej is overworked in the work that we've assigned her to do, and therefore has to send work that she could be doing in-house out. And there's times when I'll think, well, why are we sending that out? Well, you don't have an 80-hour day to get it done. And so for me, I'm not struggling as much with that because I'm not living in the fear that we're not going to be able to see the savings. I think it will be there. I think that the student assignment plan numbers that we just talked about, again, are for '16, '17. We're going to see significant efficiencies in '17, '18. So for me, that part is not so scary. We're going to see significant savings. We're already seeing some of the numbers that research is pulling together on that. So I guess that's where I'm at on this, and I don't know if anyone else has any other comments. Mr. Vargas.
Yeah, this is, this one's hard for me, too, because I do wonder about your capacity and your ability to expand what you're doing, and I know that there's a lot. But I am concerned, I'm trying to be pragmatic about, I know we're saying we're really hoping and we're thinking it's going to pan out and where these things are going to happen, but that language concerns me, and it also concerns me to be able to say that to constituents, that we really hope it's going to pan out, we're basing it off of, you know, some existing data. But there's a world where it can't, and I don't think, I don't want to say that that's and I don't think, I don't want to say that that's being afraid, but more because there are these unknown factors still. I mean, I, I feel better hearing that, you know, obviously Superintendent Evans, that you're saying that you think it's going to be okay, but that still concerns me because there are all these unknown factors that still exist and it could not be. And then adding something that is not a priority that Ms. Fay had mentioned, among the other things that are unknown factors, leads me to believe that if it doesn't need to be done now and there's, there is a reward, potential risk reward we're measuring, we have more to benefit from being pragmatic and then evaluating once we have more information in a short term to then come back and make a decision when we have a couple more factors that are known. And we have a lot more to potentially lose by making the decision now, even knowing that we need to, you know, there is capacity issues. I didn't know, hearing the short, potential shortfall and even just preparing for it, that worries me. And I want to think, well, let's get more information. In the same way we've been talking about a lot of other things, let's get more information to then be able to make a decision. There's never going to be enough information, but there are several unknowns and that piece of information is the only thing that still concerns me, which is what's leading me to not move forward with this right now.
Ms. Underwood.
I think in being responsible to the public and to the taxpayers, I kind of feel like we just need to make a decision. We've had presentations from Megan frequently over the last couple of years and there's always going to be new information. I totally, I totally understand the hesitancy with additional costs that may arise with the next budget cycle, but I feel like to, to be responsible, we just need to take the information that we have at hand and move forward with it. I also don't think it's very responsible to just continue on a month-to-month basis. Like I really feel like we need to get this contract figured out with our legal services. And in listening to the conversation, I, I'm almost, you know, if we need to talk about prioritizing the three items, I almost think I would prioritize getting a second in-house attorney over, and I don't, I don't have problems with the, with the Barrett Home agreement, but I, I think I would entertain doing a year-to-year with Barrett Home as long as we had an in-house, a second in-house attorney approval. And the reason I say that is because I'm also not an attorney, but I work in professional services. I, and I've worked across offices and I've worked with others outside of my own office. And it's so much easier and more efficient, and we're talking about being efficient with taxpayer dollars here and effective. And it's so much more efficient when you have someone that's right down the hall or in the queue right next to you to just collaborate with and work with on a daily basis. And so I think, I think I, for me, that, that second attorney is really important. And I really don't have any major issues with the Barrett Home contract either, but I guess I'm just throwing that out there that, you know, if there is, if we do want to reexamine that, I, I would, I would be okay to Mrs. Fay's point of at least looking at a year-to-year agreement, but for me, the priority I think is that second attorney.
Ms. Williams.
So thank you, Mrs. Underwood, because I'm, I'm kind of in a similar path. I mean, it's hard to say and, you know, you're throwing out a budget and a dollar amount for another potential full-time employee, but I would rather us be mindful. And I very much like your suggestion of looking at making the, a second in-house counsel a priority and then switching from the potential three-year agreement with Barrett Home to a year-to-year agreement and see where we can find savings. And in the meantime, Mrs. Kenoke is still looking at all of these other areas. I mean, I know that part of SSRR is going to be looking at those dollars and programs and looking at where our dollars are best, serving students and how are we best doing our due diligence to students and to taxpayer dollars. And I think she's doing a phenomenal job at looking at all of those things. And so maybe not the popular decision, but looking at the district as a whole and looking at the next three to five years, in two years, we've saved $600,000. So I, I think it's something for me that I truly respect and appreciate, Mrs. Underwood's thought and recommendation kind of back to you for consideration because I think that is something, and I, I also don't want to see you overworked and, and working ridiculous amount of 80, 90 hours. I mean, you, you do work a lot. However, I would want you to make sure that you are doing, your due diligence to the district as well as, is really having a good work-life balance as well. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments or Mr. Wayne?
So looking at the three, I know the agreement is 264,000. What is the cost for the, well, you can't really tell me the cost for the workers' comp, but you can kind of tell me what we've done in the past years for workers' comp and then what is the cost for the hiring of a new in-house attorney?
So the cost for workers' comp could vary and, you know, we've ranged anywhere, I think from 70,000, I'm, I'm thinking of the day-to-day, I don't know if this includes all the litigation, so I may be low and I may be high, I could be wrong, to about 120,000, I think we've ranged in the last five years. And it doesn't, it doesn't correlate, it correlates more specifically with the claims that we have. So, you know, I don't know if that specifically includes litigation or if that's just sort of the day-to-day advice or the things that sort of get filed but kind of get settled through that process or the things that we've taken to trial. I'm not sure if it includes that, but that's what I would say approximately we spend per year on workers' comp. And it can really vary. I mean, if we have a lot of injuries, you know, for a lot of particular jobs, we have a lot of workers' comp claim. It's just, it's part of being an employer and part of that business. And so, you know, you'd look at what your, you know, experience has been in those last years and you'd look for that flat fee to kind of match around a little less than that experience and then you can get more things covered because then you can use that person more because it's under that fixed rate. And then you'd probably have things that would be what I would consider your litigation type. You know, yeah, we're going to take this particular case because we want to fight about the rule or precedent that it might set in this particular case and that that would be separate and distinct from, you know, that day-to-day sort of workers' comp. And so I, you know, you'd look for savings of less than whatever our average is for those five years, that's in that kind of range. With regard to in-house counsel, the way the budget system works is there is no other in-house counsel as part of the district, so you just budget, the way that my budget works is I just put another F to E of me in there. And so it would be the current salary that I make or that I's proposed to make for the next budget plus my benefits. So it's actually an overestimate when I say, and then I reduced the contracted services that we have out for a difference of 80,000. So I'm really overbudgeting because I would expect that the person would make less money than I currently make. It could be a lot less, it could be a little bit less. It just depends on the experience level that we receive or get through that application process. So that's kind of what I would say with regard to number two.
But with benefits, you're looking at 100K or more?
More than that, probably more like 200.
No, for, for in-house counsel, you're saying it would be 200, it would be like 100?
Yeah, so it's, it's my salary, I, which I can't know, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head, we'll say 140, times 40%, I think is approximately 30 to 40%, 38%, something like that is the benefits. That includes retirement, that includes health insurance and anything else the district provides.
So we're presenting a package today that's going to cost half a million dollars?
But we're also talking about the contract saving, savings with the Barrett Home piece and the potential savings with having another in-house legal counsel.
Ms. Underwood.
Yeah, so it's not like this is, this is new costs. This is money that we're already spending that we're reallocating differently is, I guess how I would see it. And then I did, because I have the slides from a, a previous board meeting and just for the public's information, I, I just think it's good to know. Megan at one time, or Mrs. Neelis, Neelis Brash at one time had presented just what our array does in comparable school districts. So we'll just read this real quick. And again, it's not like we should be doing exactly what all these other schools are doing. It's just kind of helpful to have an understanding and put things into context. Des Moines has, and this was like from two years ago, so things may have tweaked, but Des Moines has no current, no attorney currently, used to have one. Denver has seven attorneys and three paralegals. St. Paul has two attorneys and one paralegal. Wichita has two attorneys and one paralegal. Colorado Springs has none. Tulsa has one and Oklahoma City has one attorney.
Thanks for reminding us of that. Does anyone else have any other comments, questions? And I appreciate your comment about it's really repurposed dollars. It's not, it's just reallocating where they're being spent. So at this time, if there aren't any more comments, at this time, I guess I would entertain a motion on the, on the recommendations.
I move to accept legal counsel's three recommendations to have a three-year agreement with Barrett Home to authorize an RFQ in pricing to go out for workman's comp and also the authorization to hire an in-house counsel.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Scanlon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Underwood. Is there any other discussion on the board table? If not, roll call, Mr. Ray.
Gotting.
Aye.
Merica.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
No.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
No.
Wayne.
No.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Nope.
Five aye.
Motion carries. With that, I would just bring to your attention the ESUCC minutes under receipt of reports. Ms. Williams.
I move that the Board of Education go on a closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel, Dr. Turnquist and Cecilia Carter, pending litigation, real estate and negotiations.
Is there a second?
Second. So a motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. America. Roll call please.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotting.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel, Dr. Turnquist and Cecilia Carter, pending litigation, real estate and negotiations. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 10:50 PM.